...tonight.
Yes, Mr. Murphy.
You have a form. Form being present, then I declare this meeting open for business. Last of our development director Lonnie Waters, if you will, please provide us with an implication.
Lord, we bow here, we thank you for every individual sitting in our crowd. Lord, we thank you for all the frontline people that are striving and working to take care of our little community. Lord, we just ask you to bless them and their families. Lord, we thank you for our law enforcement, EMTs, firemen, everybody that's out there striving to do what they can for the communities. Lord, we thank you for our employees, the ones that's going to be leaving. Lord, we just ask you to watch over them and bless them in their endeavors for whoever that might lean them to. Lord, we just ask you for these favors and blessings in your name. Amen.
Amen. Councilmember John Spalding.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Council, we have in front of you an agenda that has been presented to you. I would at this point entertain a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. Council, you have in front of you also the minutes from our August 26, 2021 public hearing, special call meeting, and our September the 13th, 2021 regular council meeting. I would entertain a motion at this time to adopt those minutes as presented.
Motion to adopt as presented.
A second, please.
Second.
And a motion and a second to adopt as presented. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. Under Old Business, we have an item A, which is consideration of approval of bid for sidewalk repair. We have an item B, which is consideration of approval of bid for Jeanette Drive, the culvert bridge repair. So I'm going to ask Lonnie if you will bring both of us to us, since it turns out that they're going to be intricately enjoined in just a moment.
Mayor Council, we did make a public bid out for the sidewalks. This was just for repairs and to the damaged areas throughout the city. It come to around 14,000 square feet of concrete and reconstruction of the old sidewalk. We had one bid come in. That bid was for $392,598. That covered traffic control, disposal of the deck of old sidewalks, all the items, landscape, and everything it would take to repair these. So that's the only bid we had. And under the Jeanette Drive, we have opened bids today, and we received two. One was Northwest Georgia paving. It was $608,766.57. The other was Bartow paving with $730,000. The engineers that we had met with and hired to help us with this project was here, and under his advice, we should table this and consider what we could do, if anything, concerning these costs, because it was above what we expected.
Brendan, could you give us a little background?
Yes, sir. And just to add a little bit levity to the situation, you notice the engineers aren't here to give the news. But thank you, Lonnie, for telling us that. And for the members of the audience, what we had looked at is, we had some storm damage to one of our bridge culverts. Originally, we had petitioned the Georgia Department of Transportation to assist us with some funding. We were able to secure about $140,000. We had originally estimated that it was probably going to come in at around a quarter million dollars. We even thought, well, maybe it's going to come up to $300,000. And so because we were leveraging some GDOT monies, we got a GDOT pre-qualified engineer. We go through the design process. We go through all the, if you want to call it delays, if you want to call it processing procedures. We're being very deliberate in making sure that on the back end, when we're getting ready to let the project, we would be able to petition GDOT, we'll do everything to secure the 140, leverage that with some splot money that we had, intended for 100% to be towards sidewalk, all while balancing the monies of about 700,000 remaining in the 2014 sidewalk project or splot project. So if you told me on Friday, when the agenda package is going out, the 400,000, doesn't really bother me for the sidewalk. However, after 3:00 today, when we open up the Jeanette, and it's probably about $300,000 more than what we had originally thought. And so then you have to quickly assess whether or not it's worth doing it to the GDOT standards to secure the monies, although I do think that's still a value. I do think that the tabling is a good move to allow us to coordinate with finance. Lonnie and Sean have done a phenomenal job securing some, at least verbal commitments from FEMA, GMA. We want to kind of pencil in what we think. Both projects are important. The Jeanette project is important. The sidewalk project is important. However, we're just going to have to revisit the financials. It's not a matter of doing either or. We're going to do both. We can fiscally do both. It's just a matter of making sure their monies are appropriately arranged, and so we don't overextend and do something irresponsible.
Any questions, counsel?
You mentioned GMA and FEMA conversations. That's within the last day or so. New or...
It... Dr. Proctor, we have been talking with FEMA either verbally or by email. They have requested a form about some historical information, which it does not affect this, so it should be simple, just tell them it don't affect. We are... The last conversation I had was a couple weeks ago, which started with money. They haven't guaranteed us any dollar amount. They said we were going to get help. They knew that. But for this project and the code, they were waiting on the bids to come in, and then they were going to look at the percentage. Normally, they would pay 75% of what we need, and the city would pay 25%. So at this point, we don't have a figure. The figure that we were up to was like 400 and something thousand for both projects, the code and Jeanette. But the set dollar amount has not been proposed to us yet, but we're getting very close to doing that.
So would it be fair to say that our conversations up until this point have been anticipating a much lower cost? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So this could very well change the narrative with regards to how much they're willing to contribute.
Thank you, Lonnie. Brendan. Any further questions from counsel?
With a 30-day delay, give sufficient time, Lonnie.
I would hope so, yes. I know we have, between our engineers and EXP who has been working on Jeanette, they have been in contact and gave FEMA, GMA, everything that they've asked for. They've worked very well with us, both engineering groups, and, you know, they're wanting to settle this and give us a set amount as quick as possible. So it's very possible we could have an answer in 30 days. It may be 60 days. I don't know.
The... What... How long would the bids be good for?
I'd have to go back and read the entire bid that came out today. Usually, they're good for 30 to 45 days. But, you know, if we're...
And the one that's in the act does not have a date on it.
Yeah.
I did check that. I'd like to make a motion. We table it for 30 days.
Make a motion that we table item A and item B for 30 days.
Yes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to table item A and item B of Old Business for a 30-day period of time. Motion and a second. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. It is tabled. Under New Business, consideration of approval of resolution, excuse me, Resolution Number 2021-700, and appointment of Matt Dawkins to interim police chief. Counsel, I entertain a motion at this time.
Second.
Make a motion. Our second motion.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries unanimously. And at this time, I'm going to ask that we suspend the meeting for just a few moments in time. And I'm going to ask our Chief Gregory Lovell, if you will come to the front. And counsel, if you will, please gather in across the room. Okay, so this Resolution Number 2021-700, whereas Gregory G. Lovell began his career as a public servant by enlisting in the United States Army and served his country honorably, and whereas Gregory G. Lovell continued serving his country and the state of Georgia by serving with the Atlanta Police Department, whereupon his duties provided him invaluable experience through a multitude of events and situations, and whereas Gregory G. Lovell brought the aforementioned experience with him to the first mountain city in October the 25th, 1996, as a patrol officer with the Jasper Police Department, and whereas Gregory G. Lovell has been promoted through the ranks from patrol officer to the appointment of chief of police on October the 18th, 2011, and whereas Gregory G. Lovell continues serving this community with honor, dignity, and professionalism as the chief, and whereas the mayor and city council would like to recognize Chief Lovell for his valuable contribution that he has made to his department and to this community, and whereas the mayor and city council hereby authorizes for the street known as Dixie Street to be changed to G.G. Lovell Street, and for city staff to move forward in the appropriate manner to legally change the aforementioned. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Jasper, having met and considered this matter in open session on October the 4th, 2021, hereby fully supports this action and duly recognizes Chief Lovell for his positive contributions to the department, city, and the entire Jasper community. I think of Brendan.
I have seen Greg smile more today than any other day.
Exactly. And while we are here, I think it's entirely appropriate that Chief Greg Lovell, in appreciation of 25 years for the City of Jasper and 11 years serving as chief of police, congratulations on your retirement, October the 26th, 2021, mayor and counsel of the City of Jasper.
Thank you very, very much.
I'm sorry.
You must have never seen her smile.
I know.
Was it better? It's more balanced. Max here?
It's Max. Is that's what I'm calling it? Jim, come on up.
Greg, you better at least smile.
Chief, we're going to need that one. We're going to put this one up. You can have that one to take off the line.
And Matt Dawkins, where is he? Come up, please. Do you have something for him?
Greg, how did you not go bald? He's already bald.
So you're not going to get away without signing something. And this is in witness where the city and the interim department have executed this agreement. So this will make you official.
Did you last?
It hurts a little bit there.
All you got was this. This is Simon.
Yeah. You don't do anything else until you retire, though. I'm using my thinking. And Mr. Syklin, if you would please come and sign this. I bet you he's got his own feeling.
He does.
Thank you, sir. We will give you copies of this at a later time, but congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we'll pitch. Let's make of this.
More pictures.
I'm not going to be on that together.
Get together like you like each other, because I think... Okay. Thank you.
I almost turned you.
I keep it in terror.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we will start our meeting again. Thank you so much for indulging our own interruption there, but it was important to all of us. In the right of B, consideration of approval of ordinance Number 2021-21 and ordinance Number 2021-22, request annexed into the City of Jasper parcel JA 10052.001, consisting of 3.85 acres, and rezoned from county highway business to C2 general commercial. This property is located at the intersection of Nor Drive and West Church Street in Jasper, Georgia. Lonnie, if you will, please.
Mayor Council, staff recommendation... This recommendation is based on the analysis of this application using the standards and criteria found in Section 94-246 of the zoning ordinance. Staff recommends to approve the request of the annexation into the City of Jasper and resell the property from county highway business to C2 general commercial. Should Mayor Council approve the annexation request, it is expected that the following minimum standards are demonstrated and met as requested by the staff during the appropriate approval process. If the current proposal does not meet these minimum standards, it is understood that the development plans to... Plans will be altered and come into compliance.
Thank you, sir. Counsel, I entertain a motion at this time to approve this request. Have a motion and a second, please.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion by counsel?
Lonnie, we have adequate sewer and water location in the...
Yes, sewer is on the property right behind, and they had also some sewer on one end, and the water line encompasses that on two sides.
And for the public at large, please note that this is a request for a commercial and not residential. So thank you. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
Aye.
We have one opposition. The motion carries. We just let the record note that Councilmember Turk Raffield voted in opposition to this proposal. Item C is consideration of approval of ordinance Number 2021-23 and ordinance Number 2021-24, request to annex into the City of Jasper parcel 029B061, consisting of 17.28 acres, and rezoned from county RR2 R2 residential. This property is located off of Jeanette Drive in Jasper, Georgia. Lonnie, I believe that...
Yes, the gentleman and the family that requested this has been in contact with us to date, and they have issued a written email requesting this to be tabled due to the moratorium and trying to get some questions answered about that before they move forward.
Counsel, I entertain at this time a motion to grant the request to table.
Second.
Second, please.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. We are tabled. Item D is consideration of discussion of variance, request on existing lots that are currently zoned R3 parcel JA 12056.008, JA 12056.012, JA 12056.015, JA 12056.017, JA 12056.007, and thank goodness, JA 12056.019, located off of West Sellers and Mineral Springs Road. And Lonnie, I think there has been a request to table this.
Yes, sir. Yes, you have.
That's correct, Mayor. I've been in contact with the attorney representing the applicant, and they do request that we table this. As you know, a legal issue came up regarding the city's ability to actually grant this variance, and so the applicant asked for 30 days to see what, if he was saying, could be worked out regarding that legal issue.
Okay, counsel, at this time I'll entertain a motion to table this request.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to table. Any further discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries unanimously. Item D is consideration of approval of intergovernmental agreement between the City of Jasper and the Pickens County Board of Elections and Registrations. And we'll ask David Syklin to bring this to us. And David, before you start, I was going to make the public announcement at a later place in our meeting, if that's okay with you.
That's fine. Whatever you want to do, mate.
Please bring this to us, David.
Aye. As the council knows, Pickens County, through their Board of Elections, has helped the city for the last several elections in the holding of the city elections. And just because election requirements are getting more and more detailed, we thought that it would be wise to have a written intergovernmental agreement between Pickens County and the city to have the Board of Registration, Board of Elections, to handle our elections. And that's what this agreement does, is it basically provides for them to handle all of the election duties. Except the city does have to continue to act as the filing officer for all financial statements. And we do have to review and approve any calls of election that otherwise the election board is going to handle it for us. Of course, there will be a charge, and whatever their costs are, they're going to pass on to the city. They're having to hold the election. And the agreement is basically for six years, at which time we can renew it. We also can terminate it with 60 days' notice. So I think elections has become such a specialized area now that this is a good agreement for the city, at least until we grow a little bit more and can have staff to be specialized in that area. So I'd be glad to answer any other questions, but would suggest to you that we need a motion to approve this intergovernmental agreement for which...
Counsel, is there any further questions at this point?
In the past, too, were the cost of the elections, we still give that... Pay them for that? Do we know that?
I don't know, though. This is my first election where I've been city attorney, so I don't know who paid for the cost of the elections.
I believe, just looking back at what I have, the city paid for the supplies that were lost. It wasn't a... We're paying to handle it. It was just an reimbursement.
I guess we don't have any idea. I'm against, of course, but I'm... Well, I'm clear, yeah. I'm just asking a couple of questions. Do we have any idea what the scale of those cost are?
I can give that to you.
I would say that perhaps in the future, we, you know, when we don't have an election right on us, that we may want to talk to the Board of Elections. As everybody knows, we have early voting, and there's a bad written letter by the Attorney General's Office the Attorney General's Office that basically wants to treat early voting as if it's an election precinct on Election Day, which means you have to have three poll officers. So when they move early voting from the Board of Elections office to another location, it means they have to hire three people with poll training to handle the early election, which means you end up paying for three employees for 21 days, and that cost can end up being, you know, what, 240 a day, so it can be $3,000, $4,000 just to do the early voting. And there ought to be a way that the Board of Elections could have it at their office using their employees, and they wouldn't have to hire additional staff. But, you know, this is the way they want to do it for this election, but I think in the future, we need to talk to them about that to try to hold down our costs. But otherwise, you know, I think overall, it's a good thing to have, because presently, I'm not sure that we've got any staff that has the training hours necessary to service our election certificate.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Stacy Godfrey, our Director of Elections, is here. Would you mind asking her if she'd like to address some of these things?
Stacy, if you would come forward, please, and we're going to give you a grilling on a lot of things.
I have to go.
You're making this so.
Well, just to explain a little bit more about that, any polling location has to have three people at all times, has to be a manager and two assistants. That's not the only people that has to work the election. You still have the people who will take the card and put it in the computer for the voter. You have the person who will help them, show them where to scan it into the scanner. So it actually takes for a presidential or for a state election about 10 people to run absentee voting. At the actual polling places, you don't have as many people, but you still have to have the manager with the two assistants. We have, I've been explaining this to you, you know, we have a staff of two and a half. We have two full-time and one part-time, so we do not have the staff to be able to work the advanced voting out of our office. That's why we do rely on the poll workers to do that. We do pay the poll workers, but because it's three different municipalities having an election, we will divide the price of poll workers that work between the three different cities, so it won't just be on Jasper.
Awesome.
Okay, great. Any further questions for Stacy?
Thank you, Stacy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Stacy. Yeah, counsel, at this time I think we're back to interhand a motion to approve the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the Jasper County Board of Elections and Registration.
Motion to approve.
Second, please. Motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries unanimously. Item F is consideration of approval of a special event to be held October the 23rd, 2021, on Stagall Drive by Penley Creek Brewery. And I'm going to ask Daniel, are you in the audience? There he is.
There he is.
Daniel, I did not recognize you. If you will, please come forward and present this to us. We have to get you closer, Daniel, because some of us might not hear as good as others.
Okay, all right. Two clinkers or mirrors. I'm sorry, you're... Crap. I messed my case.
Yes, that's fine. So we were looking on having live music on Stagall, also food vendors, and show a movie as the sun went down, and that's pretty much the event in a nutshell.
So, what movie?
We're thinking family-friendly, we're thinking Frankenweenie or some sort of animation movie for, for the family.
And that is the, October 23rd, right?
Correct.
Counsel, any questions?
No questions, Mayor. I believe this goes right along with the vision for that area. We want to multiply it on the agenda for that specific location. I'm really proud of our organization and the city and the merchants for utilizing that space the way they have been, and I believe it will be utilized more and more with events like this.
Counsel, I entertain a motion at this time that we approve this special event to be held October the 23rd.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Unanimously, we may have that event.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you.
Item G is consideration of approval of special events to be held October 21st, the 29th, and the 30th, on Stagall Drive, and I'm going to ask Cindy DiMaio to come forward and, Permane, if you will, please. Counsel, Cindy DiMaio is with the Rotary Club of Jasper as well as other things. I don't think I have to introduce her to you, but, and Permane is with tacos and margaritas. And since it turns out that these, these events are interconnected, we've asked them to appear together. So if you will, Cindy, please present the first event, and then Permane will ask you to say, uh, third.
Counsel, Mayor, thank you for considering us today for this event, for these two events, actually. The first event is on October 21st. It's the Rotary Club of Jasper, it's in Washington, the Rotary Clubs of Canton and Woodstock, are coming together to hold, host a world poll year event fundraiser. It will be held at Penley Creek. It'll see tacos and margaritas. Will be the caterers. So we're really excited to bring communities, you know, outside of our, outside of Jasper, into Jasper and right there on Stagall Street. We are requesting that Stagall be closed, even though it's a Thursday night, we're asking it to be closed between 6:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m., in the hopes that we can better offer social distancing, because we're hoping to have a pretty decent crowd at this event.
And this is two different roads.
Four different roads.
Okay.
And we would like to extend an invitation to all of you to attend.
Okay, so that's event number one. Counsel, any, any questions on these events? At this point, I would hand a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Discussion, oh, I'm, I think this is phenomenal. I think it's wonderful that we're doing this. Is there any interest on council's behalf to keep the road closed from week close for this event until that following Monday? I think it's a great opportunity for us to test that space for school traffic that everyone wants to turn it up for one day. I think this is our chance, and it's right before us for this event that I believe will be approved. I think we can keep the road closed.
Okay, so let's do the event.
Yes.
Okay, so have a motion and a second on the event. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And that event carries. Now, if I could...
Tickets are $20 apiece, and we need to know in advance. And you're going to, sorry.
Was that discussion or an ad? How many tables did you want?
I already got all two, man.
Okay, so, so all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. That event is, is in place, and now I'm going to go ahead with the third event next, and then we'll come back to you.
Yes.
Second event, ACC. I'm here on behalf of ACC, too. Unless you want to do...
You're here for the conservancy.
I'm going to come back, yeah, to ask for the conservancy.
Okay, so the conservancy is requesting...
So I am here on behalf of Dr. Robert Keller from the Atlantic Coast Conservancy, and they would like to show Mel Brooks' Young Frankenstein on Saturday, Octo, yes, Saturday, October 30th. It's the night before Halloween. They would like it to be on, right there on the street. Admission will be free, and the movie is rated PG. This is from Dr. Keller.
Any questions? That's good.
You made a motion.
I would entertain a motion at this time. Counsel, please say it.
I would have a motion that we approve of the 29th for the movie.
And a second, please.
Second.
What is it, and a second? Any further discussion by council?
I was going to say, can I say it's actually the 30th?
It is the 30th.
Instead of the night before Halloween.
30th. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And that carries, so item three.
I represent the LC Taco, and I want to do my first event in October 29th. The only thing I want to do is just like, live music, like mariachi, and maybe do a movie. I don't know if anybody would, um, make a movie, like something like my dress around like dead bed. So is what I want to do, and paint faces for children and old stuff.
Now, I did not have you down for the movie, so you have to have a license for that. You have a license for that. Okay, okay, so let's not do the movie, the movies. But you do face painting, and then you're going to have mariachi bands, is that...
Oh, it's right over there.
Mayor, if I may, there may be other businesses with a license, so I believe that area is covered for a license. It's a collaboration.
So you will go through, you have a license on the movie.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're talking about the movie, we're talking about face painting, and, and mariachi, or how big. At this point.
So maybe any...
Discussion by council. All in favor, please say aye.
Did you get a second? Second. I'll second.
No, we made the movie.
Okay, first, second. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, same. That carries now.
Good job.
Good job, thank you.
Cindy, thank you. Our vote is closed, it's $10.
Mayor, do you want to bring in the baller conversation? The baller conversation?
I will open that up now, because I think that's a very good time. And so while it's ongoing, if you'd like to make a motion from your position to approve the closing of Stagall between the dates of somewhere, somewhere, somewhere.
Yes, so I'd like to make a motion to close Stagall for the events to be held downtown, and that is from October 21st until the following Monday morning. That means that's extremely closed for pedestrians only. That does include removing the silver barricades so people can be under in that location.
Well, we'll fix it somewhere, okay. But now, what date is the date? From October 21st until what date?
Whenever they normally, the city closes normally, is that Monday morning?
Monday morning, yes. Monday morning.
20th. Not that you care.
October 25th. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Wait, wait.
No, no, we can do the discussion.
Okay, discussion.
Can I have those dates again? Because I think we're off the date. 21 through the 25th, and Halloween is following.
That's not following, that's the other's ball. This is just for this city's events at that time. And my only concern is, have we discussed this with the Board of Education so that we know how it affects their... Is there any one here from the Board of Education? The answer is no.
So I will say, Jim, that has been brought up on this end also, Sonny Parker, Dr. Parker brought that up.
Of course.
Yeah, same as that question. The answer is no.
Could we have city staff to, to address that? Just, can we have city staff to address? The friend is like...
Absolutely, city staff.
Glad to do that, huh? Kind of like Greg's back there saying, sure, the police department will be glad to do that.
You good with it?
He's good with it.
Chief Lawdler, good with it.
Can we somehow make it conditional based on that conversation?
I amend my motion that this be conditional based upon conversation with school board.
Okay, so we have amended motion and a second. Could be amended the motion.
Also, if it does get, for the event, we need to make sure we're posted a lot back a thousand, because it's going to surprise some people on Monday morning.
Monday morning, we'll be back to go on.
Jasper, not waiting on Monday morning, then maybe there's a way to get it pulled out.
It don't matter.
70 minutes.
That doesn't matter.
They're used to it.
It's a test. Any further discussion by council at this time?
We have a motion, just...
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries, and we will try that experience. Item A is consideration approval of Resolution 2021-12 for Georgia Cities Week, and, and this got brought to my attention. This is a resolution recognizing that week of October the 3rd, Tuesday night, and encouraging all residents to support celebration and corresponding activities. So this encourages all citizens, city government officials and employees to do everything possible to ensure that this week is recognized and celebrated accordingly. Intend a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. The motion carries. Item I is consideration approval for First Mountain Tasting Room to advertise for alcohol license. And Lindsay, we'll ask you to bring this to us, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So staff received the application from First Mountain Tasting Room to be located at 35 South Main Street for a wine specialty shop, and we're just asking if we begin advertising for this license.
Make a motion, we approve First Mount Tasting Room to advertise for alcohol license.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion by council? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries unanimously. Item J, consideration approval of contract with Universal Concepts for Main Street Lights and Christmas Bands. So we brought this forward before, we will bring it back, and I wanted to also let you know that the funds will be paid from, where is it?
Hotel, hotel.
Turn around, please.
Hotel, hotel.
I'm waiting for, where's it going to be paid from?
Hotel, hotel. Please, every side, thank you.
Is there any, any further questions by council, all in this? All in favor, a motion that we approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. And the motion carries unanimously. Committed reports, I'm going to ask that we abbreviate committed report somewhat, but I want to start out by saying that we have a public announcement that needs to be read. And that announcement is that for the September, October, and November council meetings, that you should note that the change in the polling place location will be the municipal courtroom being at 55 Dixie Street Suite Seat in Jasper, Georgia 30143, which is next to the Jasper Police Department. Please note that the polls will open at 7 and be open until 6:00. Please note that the polls will open at 7:00 and be open until 7:00 p.m. On Lex and A, being November the 2nd, 2021. And at this point, I also want to give my personal thank you to Greg Lovell, who has done such a magnificent job for our city. It's been a pleasure to work with Greg for the last almost 20 months, but I've known him for quite some time before that, and, and we really appreciate everything that he has done. So I'm going to ask the Development Committee, that would be members Sonny Parker and Kirk Raffield, if they have statements that they want to say at this time.
My only abbreviated, we've had a meeting with CPLs, furthering the discussion with them on how to better serve our city on the Development Committee, and I look forward to seeing the results.
And I was just, Mayor, those, those comments, obviously a lot of activity going on, but the exciting part is we've engaged an organization that would build those guys to a better, better city.
Thank you. Street and Parks, council members Ann Sneady and John Fast?
We don't have, we don't have an update right now. We're going to have to schedule another meeting.
Administration Committee, council members Jim Liddy and Ann Sneady?
We have had two meetings with the staff concerning work on the employee handbook, and hope to have that available to legal counsel and to the city council after it's reviewed by legal counsel. Not, probably going to happen by the next meeting, but we sure are working on having that done this year.
Thank you. Water, wastewater committee, council members John Fast and Dr. Stiney Proctor?
Only thing I have is that we've recently completed our most recent leak detection study. No major leaks were determined to be found. There's some conversation about maybe doing one more phase of that, and the committee will be meeting soon to discuss that. And other than that, we just continue to work on getting the approval for our wastewater plant, so.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have an estimated leak rate?
Yeah, four?
No.
The only meter area we've done, if correctly come wrong, David was up on the new meter and where we metered the water coming from AlloJ, and it indicates that our meters are a problem.
Thank you. Police and Fire Committee, council members Kirk Raffield and Jim Liddy?
Thank you, Chief. That's all.
That's good. I'll, I'll second that. I was able to work closely with Greg for a number of months as interim, and wasn't a day gone by that I didn't appreciate him more and more. And I'm glad Greg put a smile on his face.
That was worth a lot.
Thank you, thank you.
Financial board, Bertrand, if you will, please.
Okay, I gave you the financials, you can read, but we're at 75% of our budget. General fund's looking pretty good. We don't have a lot of overages in the expense. This is the month we get our big annual payment from the insurance commissioner. It comes on the 15th. We've got a couple of departments that are a little over budget in water. Have not done that budget amendment yet. I keep saying I'm going to get it done, I just can't seem to do it. But other than that, things are pretty much on target. If you'll notice, the 2020 Splot report is attached. Currently, they're 731,000. Looking at the monthly deposits, they range anywhere between 80 and 82. And if you recall, we budgeted 65,000 a month, so that's a positive. And the 2014 Splot, we have 829,380 in it. We are no longer getting deposits in that, so that's, that's it. And if y'all have any questions or we want more detail, we'd like to provide it.
Thank you, Bertrand.
Thank you.
Development report for line waters?
Mayor and counsel, the building department issued 23 building permits for a collection of $26,286. We did 40 building inspections, 10 salt erosion, 10 stormwater, 6 animal calls. We had two verbal meetings with FEMA. We had three planning and application meetings, three pre-construction meetings, and five new business licenses.
Thank you. Fire report, Chief Steve Roper?
Good evening, Mayor and county. Over the month of September, the city's fire department responded to 168 emergencies. Those were no structure fires, no vehicle fires, no grass or brush, 18 automobile accidents with injuries, 123 medical emergencies, 27 other calls. As of the end of the month, 1166 total. Fire inspection office looked at one set of plans for construction or renovations and got the 24th stage.
Thank you. Chief, Mayor, would you come forward, please, and do this final? Jack, please, tomorrow, you know, I felt like this week saved the best for last.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The Jackson Police Department from the month of September responded to 882 calls. 911 Center investigated 51 motor vehicle accidents, issued a total of 102 citations for the following, 13 DUI, 31 speeding, one reckless driving, 48 miscellaneous force suspended over rope license, five possession of marijuana. George's tech control issued a total of 49 for a grand total of 151. Total of 64 warrants were taken for the following, possession with intent to distribute, high felony, four possessions related objects, five DUIs, one child endangerment, one DUI permit violation, one fleeing in the intention to loot, driving on suspended license, eight possession of controlled substance felony, possession of schedule one felony, two theft by taking felony, theft by taking, Mr. Mayor, one burglary felony, one shoplifting, two shoplifting felonies, seven obstruction, Mr. Mayor, one disorderly conduct, one abandoning a dangerous drug, one simple battery, one battery family violence, or incorrect with children in the first degree, one aggravated assault felony, one exploitation of disabled or elderly adult, two possession of drug, dangerous drugs, two possession of marijuana less than an ounce, 16 miscellaneous traffic violations, and extra. Miscellaneous calls, 38 alarm, 15 disorderly, crude harassment, 10 trespassing, 27 suspicious activity, and 28 domestics who investigated two burglaries.
Counsel, would you join me, please, by standing? That is good.
You made it.
Yeah, yeah. 34 years, September 30th, when I donned a uniform, the Atlanta Police Department, and so 34 years is a long time. I was looking through some of the newspaper articles that said, that quoted some of the little thing they teach you in youth schools, that you can't do it all if you do like you can. Well, I didn't do it all, but I did all I could. And I think that your objective when you take over as the chief of police is to leave it better shape if you found it. And that's not to take anything away from the former chief. And he's going to, he's going to leave it better than, than, than I. But, yeah, it is an honor of that street name. That was a big surprise. Kind of joke, I said, I'd like to maybe change the name to General Stonewall Lovell. But we'll leave it GT, that's what y'all want, it's a big honor. And first, yeah, one, one thing I want to take away from this and to thank the counsel of this administration is, some two years ago, you signed into effect the defined benefits. I've told people I've never had a child, but that was the closest thing to my firstborn is when y'all signed that. That was, that's the biggest thing, it gave, gave light at the tunnel that it is. And I think a lot of, it's a recruiting tool, it's helping ours, and we're getting around and getting more vehicles, and we're, we're getting up there. And, but, thank you, and everyone of y'all for that.
Thank you, Chief. Ladies and gentlemen, we are going into executive session. So at this point, we're thinking it's done. I don't, there will be a couple of things when we come out for those of you who might want to stay. But, let that be in true sessions of, counsel, I intend most of this conference panel to be adjourned for executive session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It will take five minutes to, counsel, I entertain a motion that this time that we come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are now back in regular session, and Brandon, I'll ask you to bring to us this resolution.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, and for the public, in consultation with legal and with staff, there has been a resolution that has been presented to you all in executive session. This resolution that has been drafted by legal with consultation of staff is to enable Mayor Lawrence pursuant to our charter to become, I guess, appointed as interim city manager with no compensation. And therefore, this will allow you all to move forward with the interviews of the candidates for October 15th and 22nd. So that is, that is what's before you, is a resolution to make the appointment, and there'll be a subsequent informational release if you also choose.
Counsel, I intend a motion at this time to approve.
Motion to approve as presented.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion by counsel? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose saying? The motion carries. Thank you very much. I will do my best to make sure that whatever happens, I don't go outside of what we want to do as a city of Jasper. Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to say one thing before you adjourn.
Okay, please.
Brandon, thank you. You came at a difficult time, and thank you for 37 months of service and, and helping us as the council and the city of Jasper. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Way to bring y'all, look at that. Thank you, Brandon, very much. We're going to miss you.
I said at Rotary meeting that I introduced you that there was no one any more thrilled to have you come than me for a lot of reasons, and, but there's a lot of us sad about your leaving, so.
Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Douglas, it has been an honor. Thank you for all you've done. Ms. Crystal, for being the backbone and the support behind the scenes. You have made a difference in our community. You have helped somebody up here help us. Ms. Addie, her daddy did one heck of a job. He made this place better for everybody.
You can be very proud of him.
You got an awesome dad. Thank you for sharing him.
Thank you.
Brandon, I want to tell you, thank you, I appreciate it. One thing I liked, that we were able to all work together, and you all were able to discuss. We all disagreed, and we all agreed, and we all made it work. And you were a vital part in that happening, thank you so much.
Thank you, Brandon.
Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
If I could?
Yes. I'm going to try to get through this. I will say that it has been my privilege, my honor. I am a man of convictions. I believe that God brought me here, and I said that only God could take me away. And he has led me to another opportunity that I feel as though that that is what he is desirous of. I've always said that I identify Christ. I identify Crystal's husband and Addison's father. And so beyond that, you all have been a blessing. I have thoroughly enjoyed it. I will continue to see y'all, as we're not currently looking to relocate, so I will be commuting. So from that perspective, this is home. I want to continue to watch and thrive and succeed. And there is a hint of pride associated with being able to be part of this special thing that's going on. So all I want to say is, thank you. It's been an enjoyable ride, and God bless you.
Thank you, Brandon. Counsel, I intend a motion to adjourn. So, second?
Second.
All in favor? You adjourn.